Welcome to the October 2nd, 2023 regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Vicki, roll call, please.
Present. Excuse me.
Present.
Here.
Here?
Here.
Mr. Jenner?
Here.
Mr. Dwyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. First up is open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Come on down.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah. So, hi, everyone. We are the Students for Gender Equality Club representatives here at Beacon High School, and we are here aiming to address gender-related issues. And today, we're here to advocate to put condoms in accessible places like the nurse's office at the school. So, here's some, just like some stats and stuff. According to the New York Department of Health, 50% of all people diagnosed with STIs are younger than 26 years old, and the largest age group of people diagnosed with chlamydia are between the ages of 16 to 20. In Dutchess County, a survey of 3,376 pregnant people, 15% were teenagers, and in Orange County, that number was 26%.
We believe allowing students to access contraceptives would encourage teenagers to consider safer options and would be a better way, would be a better dialogue to discuss sexual health and safety. It's up to us as a community to protect our students and make sure they are making decisions that help keep them safe.
This past period of Beacon Day, yesterday, we went down and we had a petition set up that, so we were able to get about 75 signatures of community members that are all very adamant with emails about making this happen. So, we are just want to encourage our students to have safe sex. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming. We are aware of your interest in this issue. I can say personally, I feel very strongly about this as well. I know that, Matt, I don't know if you want to speak at all, but I...
Yeah, Mr. Dwyer and I have spoken a little bit. I haven't had a ton of time to do a lot of research into it, but I think there's like a state application, like a state program that you can apply to as a school district that makes condoms accessible in the nurse's office. I think one of the things is like parents have the opt-out ability or something. There's, I need to learn a little bit more about it, but Mr. Dwyer and I have been speaking about it, so we can update. I mean, we certainly would have to run it through the board, I think, too, and, you know, so we'll look into all of that, and I'm happy to update you through Mr. Dwyer or your club or whatever, but I appreciate what you shared tonight. It's important.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to reach out to our New York State School Boards Association and see if they have information for us as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
I just want to talk about the Human Christmas Tree coming up. I want to elaborate on it a little bit more. For those of you who don't know me, I don't know who doesn't, I'm Dennis Pavlock. I've been in this community for 59 years, and I have an event. It was in my mind for the last five to seven years prior to this year, and, you know, I wanted to do it, and I never did it, and the person told me to continue with it, and every time he kept bringing it to my attention. And I said, okay, I'll do it. So, I'm doing it this year. It's November 5th is the date. We're all going to gather by the Pavilion Across from Ron's Ice Cream. We're going to meet there as a meeting spot. I'm going to say some opening remarks. Like I said, this was emailed to Vassar College and Maris College. In case you didn't know about Maris College, Maris College has 6,800 students, so we're hoping for a big turnout from Maris College, Vassar College, and other areas in this school district here, where I gave the paperwork to your clerks, so we can get that out to schools and get this, it's, I'm already trending on Facebook. The rain day for this event is November 12th, the following Sunday. Same place, meeting place, the Pavilion Across from Ron's Ice Cream. We'll meet there. I'll say some opening remarks, my committee and myself, and then we'll process over to the Hill and we'll start, start forming a tree. If we have more than enough people to form a tree, what we'll do, a star of David on one side, tree in the middle, and another star on the other side. If we have more people, we will, we will utilize you. Bring a group, tell your friends, tell your family, anybody and everyone. Bring your, bring everybody. It was put on the paperwork, bring an ugly sweater. You don't have to do any of that. Bring yourself, bring, if it's cool, bring it, dress for the weather.
What about a light? Do you need to...
Yeah, no, no, a flashlight or a lantern.
Okay.
And one of my friends from real, the real estate company is going to bring the cell phone, red and green cell phone, to put on your flashlight or your lantern.
Okay.
We'll have the lights of the tree, so, so that's what, that's what's going to happen. So, no open flame is allowed, so in case anybody wanted to try, try that, try that for that, that's not going to happen. So, I'm looking for a first-year annual turnout for this. We have two photographers coming, one with a drone, going to do a drone picture of it for us, and then we have another one, Peter McGivney from the library, the reference librarian is going to help us out with the photography work on that as well, and we'll get this put on out. I want to make sure this, a tree, it's, it's called the Tree Glows in Beacon, but I want to be the beacon of the United States, not Dutchess, not only Dutchess County or the city of Dutchess County and City of Beacon, but I want to be a light for the world. So, on that note, hopefully, please show up for this event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to our workshops. We have two workshops tonight. The first, we're going to hear from one of our assistant principals at the high school, Candace Edwards Allen, about our Beacon Lead Scholars Program.
So, just to introduce this, we're working on a schedule where our principals come and speak about everything happening in their school, but I want to, on a regular basis, highlight steps we're taking to get the strategic plan moving forward. So, part of the strategic plan is the focus area diversity in staff and opportunities, and part of that is doing different strategies to try to grow our own staff members and teachers. So, probably, we'll have some of you ready for the board to accept or vote on and accept at the next board meeting, but I asked Candace to come just to do a brief overview, and so you can ask questions before you have it on the agenda, and I'll let you take it away.
Hi, everyone. So, thank you for inviting me to present. I'm really excited about this opportunity and the potential for our students moving forward. So, while I was preparing for this, I really was thinking about, you know, my first teachers, my mom and my grandmother, and how they kind of always made sure that I was surrounded by mirror images of myself, stories of people that represented me, and this became my framework for kind of thinking about some of the goals for this partnership. So, what is Beacon Lead Scholars? Beacon Lead Scholars is an initiative of the Education Department at Maris College to identify, nurture, recruit, and retain youth with diverse backgrounds and/or form underrepresented groups, which may include but are not limited to students with low socioeconomic status, students that would be first-generation college students, and minority students to the field of education. So, right now, to my knowledge, that this is like the crux of the partnership, and right now, I think that that's something that's kind of lacking in our program. So, historically, since I've been here, this is kind of how the program has run. It consists of once-a-month meetings with students. Dr. Fields comes in, she's the Assistant Professor of Education at Maris College. She works with our high school students to kind of go over, create lesson plans and think about what fields they would be interested in, in the College of Education. So, just to my knowledge, there has not really been an active recruitment of students who meet that initial criteria for Maris College. And here are some of the goals moving forward for the program. We'd like to increase student interest and participation in the program, specifically recruiting students that fit that demographic group that I outlined earlier, increase student workshops and programs and opportunities related to the field of education. We'd like to have one-family event a semester, creating mentoring opportunities for students, and then in the 2024, 25 school year, we'd like to have some courses offered in the College of Ed. And then I did outline the strategic plan and the connections to the strategic plan for you guys, if you want to see that. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I think it's great.
Yeah.
I think it's, I know for me, growing up in this area, I went to school in Middletown, there were not a lot of teachers that looked like me, if any, or even when I got to college, to be honest. So, I think it's nice to be able to even just start to get that conversation, letting students know that, you know, if they were thinking about teaching and really the benefit, mine is just sitting, mine is just being the teacher, but really what it really could mean to specific individuals. But, yeah, I know, like in the city, there's a lot, you'll see, there's more people that look like myself and that fit the criteria when you're in the city, but not so much up here, so hoping that doing this can broaden in some of our students' and parents' mind and just even encourage in education.
I think one thing that, we've, we've talked about programs like this, whether it was Grow Your Own or this particular, I think this is the same idea as Grow Your Own, but it's now under a different name. I think it would be interesting to find out from students what their barriers are to being in education or to working in education, because I think when you're in school, you kind of think like, I'm going to get out of here and go do something. But I was living in New York City when that first fellows class went through, where people could leave their career and get certified in a year, and I know a lot of people who did it because they were working in whatever they thought their chosen profession was and found it unfulfilling, and then decided that there was a path that was more fulfilling, which is, would be working in education. But, you know, that, that gap of, you know, kind of rejection to then value, it would, I think it would be interesting to find out from students, because then, then teachers could have like a response to that or something that explains why. You know, I think there's some people who are called to education as a vocation, but I think that there's, if you don't have a teacher in your family, or you don't kind of understand it from, or if you've struggled in school in some way, you know, you don't think it's necessarily for you. So, if there is a way to, because I, I think that like, there's one, which is the recruitment, but then there's the other, which is making people aware, but I think there would be maybe a barrier to participation that might be helpful to understand, so that it could be addressed. Sure.
We, we have some, we have some other thoughts kind of that we're incubating in terms of, we don't see, like, this program is Maris as being our only solution to this, but I think part of it is, we've been, I've been talking with all the high school folks about is, if we can get this class or these classes going, allowing time for students to visit the elementary schools or the middle school on a fairly regular basis. I know, I won't, you know, tell the long version of the story, but one of my avenues into education was being a mentor in college. I think if I had done it in high school, I would have enjoyed it probably just as much, and, and so, like, you know, doing that, looking at some of the ways we work with all the colleges that provides student teachers with us, and being a little bit more creative with them, looking at our own group of TAs, we've already started a process where people who are aides in the district have worked to then become qualified as teaching assistants. So, then, like, the next step is how do we help and support folks to then take a much bigger step to be a teacher? You know, this is a huge issue. This is like a part of it. I was really excited, because I know this is something that's kind of been on the back burner for quite a while, and Candace has shown a huge amount of initiative getting this going again, and Maris is really excited to work with us, but this isn't, you know, our only sort of action step towards this. And then one of my colleagues, and I'm sure this is backed by data somewhere, but one of my colleagues talks about like Dutchess County, you know, Dutchess County teachers, most of them grew up in Dutchess County, like, it's just a fact. And so, so knowing that, like, how do we start to impact our students in high school, our students even in middle school, getting them thinking about this as an option? Anyway, it's, it, there's so many parts to this. We want to get BTA. I'm sure BTA will want to be involved with this on this, but it's just, I think it's an exciting time, and I, you know, we're obviously biased. We think it's a great, a great way to spend your life, but, but, yeah, it's, there's a lot into it, and I, I think getting our juniors and seniors with our, like, kindergarten through fifth graders is part of it, you know, finding opportunities for that.
And even like the mentoring piece, I think, is really important, like, you know, all of us have a teacher that we remember, and I think that really helps if a student's able to connect with an adult who is an educator, that, that's a form of recruitment there.
I love the idea. I know my daughter just volunteered at the Girls in Sports Day, and she absolutely loved the time spending with the little kids and stuff, so I, I love this idea. I hope it brings more dual enrollment classes that maybe Maris could tie into and have it be educational-wise. The one barrier I think that young people are facing now is that New York State changed it, so Tier Six is now 40 years and 62, where it used to be 30 years and 55.
Wait, I don't know, what's...
Thirty, 40 years, they have to teach for 40 years or be 62 before they could retire.
Okay.
Where it used to be 30 years and 55 for previous tiers. So, like, that's, like, I'm an educator. I'm saying, do you really want to do it for 40 years to my daughter?
Right.
You know, so that, that makes it hard and stuff, so.
And that's tough, too. Like, I, like, my, both my sisters teach, and, like, you sure? You know, it's that, always that, and so you think, you wonder if the students are hearing the same thing, like, are you sure this is what you want to do, like, you know, like, but...
Well, I think another piece of it, too, is that, like, the, one of the things that's out in the media all the time is about how underpaid
Yeah.
...teachers are, which is true, and I'm not, and I was a board member, like, we're very aware of, like, our, you know, our, what you call it, like, you know, like our payment scale and all of that stuff, but I don't know that it's, it's not exactly, like, it's not a pathway to poverty if you, like, understand how to plan your finances and what works, and that fits in, the thing that was always asked every year when we ask students what they want, they want to have an understanding of personal finance and how to, you know, make, because if you know you're going to earn a certain amount of money, it would help, like, shape life choices, and then you can do the things you want to do in the way that, like, in a way that works for you, you just, you know, you don't want to get in a lot of debt ahead of yourself, and, you know, all of these things that then make teaching seem less appealing because of this narrative about it, but I think if it was explained to somebody, like, here's the trajectory of this, this is, if you stay with it, this is where it goes, these are the other things to consider, like, I think that there's this, you know, everyone thinks they're going to go out and make, you know, millions of dollars, but maybe if they have an understanding of what really works and how to put together a life and a career and the big sort of things that they want, might want, then that would make the option more possible to them.
And, and other thing, other than teaching, right, like, so you're an assistant principal, there's a principal, there's school psychologist, school guidance counselor, there's other avenues within education that I think we, we're just, maybe even broaden that student's mind of what education in itself looks like, because I never thought I'd be in higher ed. Like, I, you, you go to college, and you know people work there, but like, you never think it's like a career, like, oh, like, you're actually working there, and to be in that role now, so I think even with our students, identifying teaching, education, but the, like, the counselor, the this, the that, and really spreading it out, and I think you might get a, a larger turnout of just curiousness, like, oh, there's more to education, you know, like, more than just a person sitting in front of the classroom who's teaching.
Thank you for reviving this program.
How many, how many students do you have currently participating?
So, Dr. Fields and I met earlier in August, and we kind of decided to put the program on halt while, because we wanted to work on this, but last year, we only had about 10 kids that came to all the sessions with Dr. Fields.
So, hopefully, this year can be...
But there's no real active recruitment, like, we send out a flyer and say, if you're interested in education, come, you know, come to these...
And it goes to the student? The flyer goes to the student?
Goes to the students and the parents.
And this is, so this is Beacon's own version of Grow Your Own, but are they, is Maris working with other schools, other districts to, to do this, do you know, or?
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
It seems like it'd be great if they, you know, could find, find each other at countywide or some larger...
Yeah, create like a cohort.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. I can ask, I can definitely ask.
Well, thank you for your work on this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is from Matt, our superintendent, about our board goals and strategic planning.
So, like I said, we want to provide regular updates on actions we're taking around the strategic plan. I think it's important for you all to see that we're going to put something together just for the community to see, for the community to see around this. You know, it's, it's, it's important to show just even this early momentum, so thank you, Candace, and the high school team for thinking about this. I'm really excited. I, I was a, one of the schools, I was an elementary principal for the middle and high school. We are on this huge campus together, and high school kids were in our building almost every day, because they could get down so easily. It's a little bit more challenging for us, but it was probably one of the most popular classes at the high school. It was like a teaching, intro to teaching class, and I, I don't know, you know, the firm data on how it impacted students, but I know it's really sort of nudged a lot of kids into thinking about being a teacher, so I'm excited to see this grow. So, for this, I, I've just been kind of thinking about, like, you know, the board goals, and, and I've been thinking them all along through the strategic planning processes, the board goals serve as like a foundation for all the work that we've been doing, and so I wanted to kind of, it's maybe not the most beautiful thing in the world, but I wanted to sort of take some of those action steps that are in that strategic plan document and link them to board goals. So, oops, so just to remind folks, that's the, you know, mission, vision, the values, and then the four areas of our strategic plan, academic excellence, diversity in staff, and opportunities, which was work we were just talking about, high-quality curriculum and community engagement and involvement. So, if, if you go online and you look at that 10-page document, for each of those pillar areas, we have a section that says, "Our first steps are," and there's 12 of those, and so we've been pretty relentless as a, as a team, and just like, how are we getting movement on each of these? How, you know, by the end of the year, can we check all these off? That's the goal. So, I took those 12 things and I put them, I tried to connect them to the different board goals, so these on the right of that, you know, those, those boxes on the right, those are those actions that we are committed to taking this year. So, so anyway, I took those, but then, you know, with this kind of work, even though we're attempting to have the strategic plan be super comprehensive, there's always other things we're doing, because that's just the nature of a large organization like ours. So, so I have the board goal on each slide, and then I sort of targeted those strategic plan action steps underneath that I think connect are in yellow, and then we have some district work steps that I added, and these are just things we've been working on. So, I'm going to talk about a few of these. I'm not going to read every slide, they're very tuxedo, but I, I feel, I guess I, you know, in this is my opinion, that the board goals provide just a really firm foundation for this work. So, whether the board, you know, whenever you discuss that, if you are changing or whatever, we've been using these, and it's been a part of our thinking for years, and it continues to be, so I, I wanted to make that connection. So, the board has an excellence goal there, and so I found that the action steps, or some of the action steps under the high-quality curriculum, part of the strategic plan really connected the most of that, developing culturally relevant units of learning, sharing curriculum maps with the community, and gathering student input on potential course offerings in the, in the future. And then I wanted to add, because this has been a huge effort of, of the district with TOSA positions we've created and the work of Segreario, and the principals as continuing database instructional planning and support in reading and math. So, yeah, I've always, I always, when I put like those action steps in their strategic plan, I want to make sure we also talk about, like, huge other things that we're doing, too. And so, I feel like these things really fit under the excellence goal. For the equity goal, one could make the argument that every single thing in the strategic plan supports this goal. I think it's a pretty easy argument to make, because our, our thought with the strategic plan is we wanted equity infused in every single thing that we are doing, and with, but, you know, Candace was sharing earlier, you can see that, like, equity is infused throughout, but with the board's equity goal, we have creative mentoring program for students to color in student teaching, provide extra support to students who need assistance, meeting prereqs on course offerings, expand transportation offerings and support with meals for students who attend extracurricular. These are in the early stages, but works in progress, create a common set of field trips for elementary students. Just quick update there, we had, one of our elementary schools did Clearwater this fall. That, that's been something we've been, we kind of got on board, then COVID provided a pretty big disruption. Clearwater has had in the past some pretty strict health rules, but those have mostly been lifted, so all of our fourth-grade classes are doing that, some in the spring, some this fall. And so, work of the district to support the equity, board equity goal, as well as we are updating our equity report card in the next couple of months. We'll be unveiling that probably by December, January. Review district practices and policies through the district equity policy that you all passed last year, and through the Equity Committee, and also conduct professional development and equity inclusivity. A big step with that is happening at the November Professional Learning Day that we're busily planning right now. Fiscal, again, fiscal is one of those things that is kind of everything, but with the fiscal goal of the board, I thought these things sort of fit and connect with the fiscal side, although fiscal obviously impacts everything, gathering student input for future courses, creating partnerships, we talked about one tonight, that we're doing. I also think partnerships with workplace opportunities is an area we can really grow in, in the district, and creating a district calendar that prioritizes professional learning. And then, and our facilities committee talked about this just a few minutes ago, implement more long-range financial planning in facilities, long-range facilities, planning with the Board of Ed and district administration. Communication, the strategic, the strategic plan is very communication-heavy, but make sure schools have opportunities for student voice. We heard from some of our students at the board meeting. I, I've been noticing that students have been more comfortable coming to the board meeting over the last couple of years. I'll have an update on our student advisors to the board when I do that, superintendent update later, I'm excited about that, this year as well. Improving our website, so there's more resources for students and families. We talked about this at the Public Relations and Advocacy Committee the other night, that certain things, whether it's prereqs for a class, information about being on a team, especially for a modified team, which is a lot of people's first experience with sports, we need to be clear about how parents navigate that, needs to be represented on the website, so we're working on that. Developing resources for students and families who assist with the transition grades, K, 6, 9, 11, 12, you know, to the future, and then creating engaging events at each school for families focused on all aspects of supporting our students. Since the high school folks are sitting right over there, they have a series of engaging activities for families coming up this fall on a variety of topics, how to help your ninth grader, planning for college, planning for post-high school life. So, I honestly feel like as a parent of a sixth grader, I need to attend a few of those to prepare myself. So, we probably want to open those up to the community, because you'll be surprised, there's probably people at the middle school who want to get ready for that, too, but that's just with the high school. The other schools are planning their events... at the middle school who want to get ready for that too. But that's just with the high school. The other schools are planning their events as well. And then two more, so sustainability. Sustainability is, you know, again, all the board goals are sort of infused through everything that we do. But we just received information from the governor late last week about, she released her information about the state grant program for EV buses. So, we need to digest all of that and get back to the board. But it looks hopeful. We were starting to, we were starting to look at some of the grant programs that existed before this and we're getting a little bit more pessimistic, but the governor's program looks hopeful for us in terms of being able to navigate it, utilizing sustainable practices in our facilities and capital plan and then creating a sustainability plan for the district with stakeholders. That would be the sustainability committee that I'm on a, I did not do a great job with last year, but I want to breathe life into that one again. And then lastly, culture of care. So, out of the strategic plan, establish student advisory systems at each school and make sure schools have created opportunities for empowering student voice. So, we now, you know, we have student councils at each school. Principals are doing different ways of getting feedback from students, whether it's surveys, informal surveys or suggestion box type things. But we're adding to that from our level to implement climate surveys. We'll be doing that probably in the next four to five weeks to students, families and staff. We're excited about that. And then we'll do another one at the end of the year. Implement and maintain the things that we've been doing, responsive classrooms, unsregulation. We started second step in sixth grade at the middle school when Brian comes to do his presentation around that. He's going to share more about that, sort of practices at the high school. And then this year, one of the focuses, or maybe the main focus of the wellness committee, or subset of the wellness committee, I think that part we need to figure out is to review our health curriculum that we teach throughout like K through 12 and what are ways to strengthen that as well. So, sorry, I just kind of at you, but what I wanted to do is just sort of unpack the strategic plan information in terms of next steps and really connect them to board goals and also share some other things that we're doing as a district as well. So, Meredith, I sort of defer to you as president about what we want to, how we want to proceed with the board goals.
In terms of the board reaffirming their goals?
Yeah, like I.
Well, thank you for this. This is, it is a lot to, which is great. It's a lot that there, it's great that there's so much going on. I mean, does anyone have any questions regarding?
I have one quick question. So, this is a lot and you guys are doing a lot. So, I was wondering if the climate surveys are going to be a way for you to sort of measure how things are working specifically around this?
Yeah. So, we have a few different metrics. So, on the academic side, we have state testing. We also have the iReady assessments. We also have student grades. We have student attendance.
Right.
I will say very anecdotally, just on the attendance side, I know it's early, but we increased bus usage with asking the community to support that. We have a lot more students riding the bus and we have a lot more students coming to school on time, especially around about in the high school.
Increasing the distance that buses.
We decreased the distance from a mile and a half to a mile last year and, or for this year, excuse me, so bus ridership is up.
Do you have a data point for that?
I do not have a data point right now.
Not right now, but is that something that?
Oh, that, yes, we can easily do that. But, sorry, so on the academic side, we have those things. On the, we've been putting so much into like social, emotional and culture of care that we do want to use the climate survey as maybe not like the only metric that we look at, but like as a metric for how students are feeling connected to school and to each other. So, the surveys, you know, for the students will provide students time to do them in school. So, obviously, our goal is to get a pretty high return rate on those. Staff will probably get a pretty high return rate as well. Families is the tricky part, you know. But we're trying to make the survey not be super cumbersome for folks. We do want to focus on like connectedness to school, folks feel included, welcome, things like that, things that we've been trying to improve. So, those are metrics. The other part of accountability with this is with our consultants from Met Elements. They're helping us create a, I forget the name. It's like an easy name and it's escaping me right now, but it's like, for us, it's a spreadsheet, but it's basically like, this is what has been finished, this is what we're working on. And we're going to put a version of that on the website, probably.
Dashboard.
Or, just in terms of updating folks about where we are on all these tasks. Otherwise, it just kind of becomes like.
Yeah.
Works all the time, so deliverables. And then the other part is telling the story of this. And we talked about this a little bit in the facilities committee. And so, we'll be doing more with social media and the newsletter in terms of like, hey, even if you don't like the word strategic plan, like, look what we're doing here. This is really cool. So, anyway, we're going to be doing more of that. I gave you a long answer.
No, but that's great. And I just want to say that I am so excited about the fact that you're not just doing these things and talking about it, but you're going to be documenting it in a way that parents and the community can actually read it and see it and access it whenever they want to check it out. I feel like that is huge, that all by itself is a huge improvement and change.
Well, some of us administrators attended a conference this summer and the superintendent was speaking, so like a suburban Chicago district. And he had a couple of very short films of what they were doing. And literally, we were all kind of sitting at the same table and everyone at the table is like, we're doing this stuff. We need you to do a better job of capturing it. Like, not that speaking at a conference is our goal, but like, you know, there's a lot of pride in what we're doing. So, Mike Gersh, one of our retired teachers, like, he's available to help us with this a little bit. And we've been talking with him about like capturing some of this. I think some of the things happening around student voice is really, is really cool. I wasn't seeing a lot of this when I started here. So, I think students are, I think, like, because of our administrators and our teachers, students are speaking out more in a proactive way, which has been really powerful.
Do we have, I know we have a recently born student newspaper at the high school and I think at the middle school as well. And are there, is there one at all of the elementary school? They do it sort of in the form of the morning news?
Yeah, the elementary schools, we didn't want to just like sort of force a newspaper.
Sargent had one.
Yeah. So.
That's great.
More news kind of things happening at the elementary school. But we also wanted to make sure principals have like a sort of regular meetings with student leaders in all their schools. It's not just a high school thing.
Yeah.
To talk about how things are going.
With the climate survey, are you using kind of like a standard, like battery for the survey instrument? Or are you going to, so it's going to go to the same to all schools? Are you doing any customization for like, like middle and high school?
Yeah. We were working with a company, Panorama. They're one of the leaders in this field. I think we went with them because they offered a focus on sort of equity diversity issues that some of the other survey companies didn't. There, we haven't finished, we haven't finalized what we want to ask. They're, the way they're sort of broaching it with us is, you know, if you completely use the surveys we suggest, like then it can be compared to national standards. If you customize it, you may lose that part of it. But, you know, so we're kind of figuring that part out.
Because you could probably use their standard battery and just add like two or three questions that it doesn't like, like as long as the questions are structured the same, you can still link the data. Which I just meant, I meant customizing, like, just adding maybe two questions for middle and then for high school, just to capture like those changes for that age group.
Right, right.
With the equity piece, I know we like often think in terms of like, with diversity, equity and inclusion, it's focused more on racial, but I do think in Beacon, is there a way of capturing economic inequity in any of the, in any of the questions we're asking?
Yeah, I think so. But I haven't, I haven't sort of just completely dove in and create, customize my survey yet.
No, I mean, I'm not trying to ask. I apologize.
I think there's, I think there's a lot. There's also students with disabilities, like there's gender non-conforming students, you know, like, there's a lot of things where we would love to ask. I know some of the questions are, and these may seem sort of basic, but like, do you, do you see yourself in your school? Do, you know, like, things like that? Do you feel like the curriculum offered, you feel connected to? I'm not giving the questions justice. I'm not wording them quite like they have.
I'm not, yeah, and I'm, I think what I'm, the two things I'm specifically thinking about, both, like, one is that like we capture any sort of like changes that go from one age group to the next. So, we can kind of like, you know, drill down to like both age and building. Because I feel like elementary, that's, you know, four buildings, that experience will be similar, just so that we can, if we're asking people and talking to them, we may as well get more feedback, not without lengthening the survey. But then the other thing I do think is specific to Beacon, as we, and will continue to be a bigger thing, is that I think the extremes around economics are going to be greater. And so, I think starting to track that now would make sense. So, the thing about like my peers have more opportunities to do things than I do, or something like that, not writing that question. I think that's something that, because then that ties into our signature experience goal of, you know, trying to create like a unified experience for these students.
Yeah. I know with this, you know, obviously, your answers on the survey are anonymous for anyone who fills it out. But with our students, we are able to link it to the demographic data we have on the students. So, you know, we can disaggregate it that in various ways. I, years ago, I was in a district that did a comprehensive survey like this and it was, the student connected this part is really interesting to look at. And then what, what connects a student to school and from 11th grade to first? So, anyway, we'll probably, I can give just like a little bit more intelligent of an update at the 16th board meeting around the survey, because we'll be ready closer to launch at that point.
Awesome.
Exciting.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, this is so much work. Thank you, everyone who worked on this.
And later in the meeting, we are reaffirming our board goals. And if anyone has any questions or comments about it specifically as they're written by us, we can talk about that then.
I think, you know, the reason I did it this way is, I know I'm probably repeating myself. They're still really important. And I think the board putting these things as goals from all my time here, seven or six or seven years now, that it's really proved to be a foundation for the rest. We were in a workshop with one of our attorneys around DASSA responding to, you know, things that happen in school. And she talked about our board goals and she talked about how unique it is that, you know, what our board publicly chooses to focus on. So, I wanted to share that. It's not everywhere and it means a lot to us. So, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I think that when, when we made these goals, it was when I, my first year on the board. And I think everything was so chaotic that it felt a little futile, like, what could possibly become of this? But it's amazing that it has, it really felt like, you know, part of the skeleton of our work. And I appreciate you sort of describing things going on with the board goals in mind because it does, it really makes it feel like it matters. Okay. Reviewing the agenda, we do have a couple of changes. 1306, letter F, number three, has been removed. And 1313, letter M, number one, has also been removed.
What was it?
13.06, F3, and 1313, M, South Avenue 1. You good? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? And the board will return in about 30 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Kristen, second by Flora. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes eight to zero. We are going to resume with the superintendent's report. Matt, you talked a lot. Do you have any more words?
Are you trying to say something? I, just two quick things. One is we are working on finalizing our student advisors to the board and they're going to join us October 16th. But it looks like we'll have four like last year. And really excited about that. And they seem super excited. But we just want to kind of make sure and get a commitment from them, that they'll be joining us on the 16th. And just thanks to the organizers of the Spirit of Beacon Day and the parade, me and my team marched and Eunice, Eunice and I were holding the banner and it was, it was great. And we had a lot of fun and it just seemed like the day was perfect. And, oh, and then lastly, homecoming week this week and there are just a ton of things going on and there's things at the high school every day and spirit where it almost seems like at every school and like a football game at 3:30 today, which is very unusual. And it's kind of fun to be able to see a game on Monday afternoon. But anyway, all of our teams are competing at home this week at different times. Tomorrow night, we're honoring all fall athletes at 6:30. And backfield, I think the weather's supposed to be decent, at least for the first part of the week. But it's off to a great start this week. So, that's all I have, Meredith.
So, thank you. Word comments. Semra?
I'll just say how much my daughter loved the girls in sports activities. She thought it was awesome. And it may have been your daughter that led her, trained her, but she loved volleyball. So, hats off for that event.
Thank you. Kristen?
I really appreciate all the work that's gone into the strategic plan process. It's just shaping up to be some, a really helpful working document and providing a lot of guidance and action steps. And I think it's, I'm really excited to see it. I think it's already in effect, but to see us capture the data and be able to track our growth around those goals. So, thank you for, I know how much work it was. I mean, I wasn't there, but I, I can see in the document. I've heard about all the sessions and it just is, I think we had done one when you first started. And I think it was really appropriate to reopen that process now because so much had changed. We went through a pandemic, like so many things had changed. And it's just, it's really helpful. And to Meredith's point, you know, when we wrote those goals, like, it just felt like, sure, yeah, like, let's see if we can do this stuff, but let's get through a lot of other crazy stuff first. And it's actually really rewarding to see that they have not only been helpful, but that they continue to be something that we use as a guidepost and to see the impacts that has on kids. So, thank you for all that work.
Yeah.
Eunice?
Thank you. I just want to give an update about the next policy meeting is November 13th, but the time has changed from 7:00 to 6:00 PM. So, that's it. I did enjoy the parade. It was great walking with the district. It's always great to see the students that participate. There's a lot of energy there. So, it's just beautiful to see. And I feel like the, the community is out and about and they're really there, you know, rooting for Beacon. So, it was great. And I hope everyone enjoys homecoming events. So, helps be there at the game on Friday. So, that's it.
Thank you. Alina?
No comments.
Eric?
No comments.
Anthony?
Sure. So, when Candace was talking and then when Matt was talking, my mind was going back to last year's NISBA. We went to a presentation with Schenectady and they were, it was, it was an advertisement for, I believe it was the Passbook for Good was the app that they had.
Passport for Good, yeah.
Passport for Good or Pass, what was it? Passport?
I think it was Passport, yeah.
Passport for Good. And it was an app that is a student portfolio. And then like advisors could utilize it and stuff. And just the conversation tonight brought back that memory of that presentation of how students can make a portfolio so then they could sell themselves for colleges and have that digital portfolio for the kids. But also thinking about like what Candace was saying about, you know, having the kids go, you know, get involved and what they, what could they do for education? Could they go read to, I think Matt was saying, could they read to the elementary kids and like they could sign up and they would be able to do it digitally? sign up, and they would be able to do it digitally, and it would be easier, and then they, that could be part of their portfolio, if there was a club that was going on and stuff, so, just a conversation tonight resonated with me about, should we be looking into something like Passport for Good, or something similar, where I know the state is going more towards a portfolio base with the Seal of Civic Readiness, the Seal of Bilinguism, they have a Seal of Art now, so they're creating these seals where students are doing, they have to monitor their activities and so forth, and if this is something that could serve a multipurpose, one for the students ultimately, but two, also for the district to get volunteers to, to say, hey, who's coming for this, or who, who wants to come read to a sergeant's fifth grade class, and they could put it out there, and then maybe the National, like, the National Junior Honor Society could send it out on, on their page, and then kids could sign up, or, I know, like, at the open houses that I attended, in my district, we had a Spanish Honor Society, and, and we had Spanish Honor Society kids come, but it was a lot of work to, like, to organize it and stuff, but it could have just been something so quick with technology to kind of see what we could do, so, just a conversation tonight with the presentations that Candace did, and Matt did, and, and conversations and knowing, I was like, maybe this is something that we should look into for our students. I know some students are not taking the SAT and the PSATs, because it's not as required, and colleges aren't looking at it as much, so I'm, and I have a senior, and, you know, she's, you know, going through that stage now of just saying, you know, what do I need to show, what do I need to do, and I'm like, you need to show your extracurriculars, you need to show this, and, you know, so she's going through and jotting down, you know, what has she done, like, she did this, the Girls in, uh, Girls in Sports Day, and she volunteered for that, and there's other things, but they forget, they don't make a, they make a mental note of it, but they're not documenting it, whereas if they're on this app and it could document it, I think that would benefit kids to that post-secondary education piece, but also benefit the district. So just something to put out there that hopefully the district could look into.
Also, you could start to see, like, you're saying they, they're just doing things they're drawn towards, but they don't necessarily recognize them as a pattern of, like, a passion, and if they are able to kind of look at it and be like, oh, actually, I always show up for things involving younger kids, or something like that, then they can see a pattern, and start to recognize that they have an interest or a passion without.
And I know when they were talking, they were saying, like, the kids could comment on their experience, right, and, and they could document what their experience was like and stuff, so.
Do you remember, I remember asking, but I can't remember their answer, if they had, if it was connected with Naviance at all, if there was any sort of, because it would
I know we wondered that question, we had that conversation.
Yeah, because I feel like if there was something that worked with Naviance, there's so much there already, and it'd be a great extension of that.
Yeah, I don't know if it does, or, I'm not sure, I don't remember, I'll have to go back and look at it.
I think that they were working on it, I don't think it was at the time, but I think that they recognized that it would be very powerful if they, the two could work together, so.
One of the things that's interesting, I'm sorry.
Chances to see if Naviance has its.
Yeah, we were.
Or Power School has a tool, or there's a tool that, already out there that connects with Naviance.
Naviance has a niche though, right, they do the, the seventh, the ninth grade, they do that personality survey, then in 10th grade, they're doing the career interest survey, and then there, I, I forget what, there, there's some, some other aspects in 11th and 12th grade, which you could send and upload essays and stuff, and send to colleges, but it's not that digital footprint of portfolio of the extracurriculars, I think.
I, we use a program called Engage, where students, it's how you promote events, for every event you attend, you can then do a co-curricular resume, and they'll just have all of your co-curriculars, all the events you've attained, all the, all the.
Oh, wow.
Something like that, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, and I'm not saying Passport, I, I said Passbook, but, like, that's a year ago, but, but, but the Passport, but something like that, and it doesn't have to be that, I'm just thinking, what can we do for the students to, to, so they could build this resume?
Right.
But also make it easy for the district to get volunteers for things that they need, and, and it seems like, based on conversation, I was like, I've heard something like this, this could be good, and it, like, the, it triggered when you said about the high school kids reading to the younger kids, and it's hard to set up, right, but if they go through a club, and then it's just a quick message out, and people sign up for it, that could, that could work.
Yeah.
And you're also, I think, more likely to develop a habit around doing something like that, if you see you have done it, like, if you've invested time, it sort of creates a behavioral connection.
So, just a, just a thought.
Documenting their own strategic plan.
Yeah.
Matt, did you have a comment on that?
I, I just was thinking that, you know, Flora, when you asked about, or you kind of asked about metrics, and it's like, a lot of this work is hard to measure, like, you know, like, high school kids reading to an elementary class, like, it, we know it has an impact, but, anyway, it's got me thinking, like, other ways to measure and capture, and this is like by student. I have it up on my computer, I'll take a look.
I think you get kids who are doing this stuff organically, because there's kids who are for sure tracking everything they're doing, because they are gunning towards, like, a, they're like, this is good for my resume, but then there's lots of kids who aren't just thinking like that, they're ju, but they don't, they don't reap the benefit, because they don't think about their life that way, and if they could start to see, like, it's moving and, and it's taking the shape and moving towards a goal, it makes it easier to provide guidance to them.
Or teach them how to do a co-curricular resume. I've never heard of co-curricular resume, or co-curricular transcript, until I got into the field that I'm in right now, but teaching them that, for every time you do some kind of volunteer, or whatever, you can, you can have them write it down, like, in a, a transcript, and, 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 and keep track of it, it could, you, but it's back to what you were saying, I think, like, it's, they do so much stuff and don't realize all of what they do, and how, how it's, the patterns, like you said, like, you don't realize you're doing that same thing, like, did you realize that you went to every food pantry, or you went to every, you know, and how important that is for them?
Yeah.
And it's like gamifying goal setting for them, and it's like a really tangible way, and that's one of those, like, soft skills, it is so hard to learn as a kid, so.
Because you don't have, like, a big picture.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
That's great. Yeah. Flora, we're on fire tonight, we're just. So, last week, we had the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Committee, and we just sort of got organized for the year, talked about a few things, like, the state of the district website, and, and plans to, to eventually, you know, work on, work on changes to it, the, you know, the, the different learning nights that are planned at the, at the different school levels, and how that's going to really help keep parents more informed. And then, you know, we started talking a little bit about the advocacy that we're going to do this year, including trying to get parents in the school community on board around our advocacy for supports for pre, preschool special education, and sharing that info out about the resolutions that we did for NISBA, and how parents can, can also make their voices heard on this issue, so we'll be sending that out hopefully tomorrow. And then we also had a few legislative updates, including that the government lowered the tax cap for free meals, correct?
Not the tax cap, but the.
I mean, sorry, sorry, not the, the, sorry, the cap of.
The number of people.
The number of students who are.
Automatically qualified.
Qualified, yes, from, to 25%, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah, the, the, the federal government said it at 40%. It's not your free introduced lunch overall rate, but it's this, what is the term used?
Applications for free introduced, yeah.
Direct, the, the students who directly certify into the program, our number in Beacon is 33%, even though our overall free introduced is like 49. That said, the feds lowered it to 25%, so we now qualify, we are just waiting for the New York State to, like, create their application process or change it, or, so we're kind of just waiting for the state to.
Right.
So.
Do what they need to do.
My sense is Karen's kind of ready to apply, we're just waiting for the state to open it up, so, I mean, that would be huge.
Yeah, it's so exciting.
So, and that would be, just like, the whole district would qualify.
Yeah.
So that would be, you know, back to what we were doing a couple of years ago.
So, yeah, so that was really exciting news, and then the vote on NISBA resolutions is coming up on the 16th. I may be late to our meeting that day. I did look through the booklet just to see if I flagged anything that I felt like we should talk about, I did that very quickly today, and I, I apologize for not bringing that up sooner, because I, I would like us as a board to look at those resolutions and talk about them ahead of time, just because I feel like those conversations are really generative, and, and it does help to know that we're sort of speaking in a unified voice when our representative is voting on those resolutions, but I did want to say, just, if there's anything that you feel you definitely want to bring up, I mean, you know, let's, let's, we could definitely talk about it via email, since we, we wouldn't be able to in time for our next board meeting, but nothing jumped out at me, and, yeah, that's all that I have. Awesome, and our, so we're canceling the 23rd, the October 23rd Prol meeting and policy. Sorry, yes. Meeting? Yes. Okay. That was the other thing.
Well, we're talking about that, I forgot to mention that we have a October 30th Facilities meeting, and are we rescheduling audit for?
So we have an audit committee meeting scheduled on the 16th before the, is that happening?
We're not sure yet.
Okay. Tentatively, we have a 6:00 PM Audit Committee meeting before our next board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll let us know?
Yes.
But we won't have audit on the 30th, because we're doing, or we, or we could, if, if this.
We would probably try to schedule before the 30th, if they're, if the auditors are not down to 16, we don't want to push it out to the 30th, so I might, I might ask you to schedule something before that.
Okay. Great, that's, that's all I got?
That was it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I just have a couple of things, one, I'm going to be texting you guys, or doodle pulling or something, to try to figure out a short pickleball tournament between board members and administrators, I think it'll be really fun, team building, it's a relatively new club in Beacon, so we can learn what pickleball's all about, so you can look forward to that. I'm also.
When would this be?
When, in, I'm, I'm actually hoping in October, like.
Just thinking about training.
You better get on it. But I, I know from experience, anyone can do it, because I've done it, and I'm not athletic in that way at all, not coordinated, none of it. I'm also trying, this came up in our facilities meeting, it's come up in audit, where I'm, I, I'm going to do a little research, talk to Anne Marie and Matt about trying to organize our retreat for this year, and it seemed like we had one discussion that it would be basically about financial planning, so if everyone feels good about that still, and I'm thinking early January, so I'll, I'll also kind of be in touch with you guys about that date. One other thing I want to mention is, I know there had been discussion about starting our meeting a little bit earlier and going straight into execs, so we didn't have to leave the meeting in the middle, that's always been kind of an awkward transition, we have one board member who can't make it earlier, and so we're going to keep the 7:00 PM start time, and, you know, if something changes, we'll, we can, we can talk about that, because I, it would be nice, but I, I think, you know, it's been working the way it's working now, and just continue to do that. RFP for legal counsel is out, and we're, we're expecting later in the month to, October 20th, to, is the deadline for proposals to come in, and so then we'll look over them and make interviews with the various firms that we want to hear from, and I wanted to ask Segrerio, have you started the curriculum committee meetings yet?
We did.
Okay.
We just had one meeting, and it was kind of to go over other results of our opening day survey.
Okay.
Identify a question of the, I can send you the list of the names.
Okay, well, I think.
It's kind of on the same schedule, kind of the same model as last year.
Okay, Eric is actually the board member, member of your committee this year, so, if you can just put him on your mailing list, that would be awesome, I just wanted to make sure that was happening. And lastly, I missed the parade for Spirit of Beacon Day, but I, I caught the aftermath, and it was great, it was great to see so many people on Main Street, and just a ton of enthusiasm, and so many people wearing their Beacon Together t-shirts, mine has already been absconded by, with, by my son, so I'll be around for more, but, and just so many kids walking around with their instruments, the, because they had been in the marching band, it was just, it's, it's, you realize that it, the, the district is really such a big part of that parade, and so it was, I felt very proud to see everyone there. Okay, new business, first thing in new business is to reaffirm our board goals, does anybody have any comments or questions about board goals, or do you feel good about them?
I think Matt secretly, like, snuck it on us today with the whole strategic things lined up, because it just made it more, made it, it made it make sense.
Good.
You know, and, and I think, for some people, how we, our visual learners are just whatever, so being able to take the specific goals and, and tie it into the strategic plan, it was like, okay, yeah, like, we can still, we're still doing that, you know, so it was, it was really nice to.
They're not abstract anymore.
Right, or, or foreign, or old, or, we still need them, in my opinion, like, there's still.
Absolutely.
Stuff that we're, we're accomplishing, and making small accomplishments, and future ones, it's really good.
I think the good thing about them is that there is a lot of room for growth within them, they're not so specific that it's like, oh, it's not something where I think we'll ever really check off our list, I think that they, you know, they remain, I used the word skeleton earlier, scaffold is what I was trying to, but, yeah, it's, you know, it's really, it's great to build the work around it. Can I have a motion to reaffirm the board goals?
So moved.
Flora, second. Eunice, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Second thing is this letter to the mayor, city council, and city administrator regarding rezoning, there's a draft in, in our.
Agenda.
On the agenda, I did send it to our legal counsel, and they did have a comment, they did not feel comfortable with, and I'm just going to read you his email, or you just find it. Yeah, they did not come, feel comfortable with the term legal stakeholder, he wrote, I agree that this phrase, and I asked him specifically about that, because that was the only part of the letter I thought could be possibly controversial, he said, I agree that the phrase legal stakeholder is probably inaccurate, as the board is not an involved agency under SICRA regarding development decision-making, so the edits that he made, I can just redo that quickly.
Well, it, I think it does, if there's a school, if there's a plan that gets put in, and a school study, a school impact study is contributed, then we become a stakeholder. But it's not, it's not relevant for this.
Right, I think for this, he felt, yeah, so he changed it to say, oh, I accept it, do you know, how do I go back and see the?
Go to com, yeah, go to comments.
There, okay, so he, he changed.
Interested party, probably.
Will it show it where it was? Sorry, I can't.
Yeah, if you, so, click on the.
Oh, get linked to this.
Oh, wait, it's going on.
I don't know.
We're, we're learning live. So, wait, did you?
So he deleted the school district is a legal stakeholder, and put Beacon's development decisions impact the school district in a number of ways, including enrollment and transportation, that's basically the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, does anybody else have any questions or comments about this?
I have comments about it, because I watch the meetings that, and they're doing a workshop tonight, which, obviously, we can't watch, but it seems like they're moving quickly with this potential zoning change, I don't, there would have to be a workshop, there would have to be, like, a few things, so it's not like it can happen immediately, but, and it's complicated, and, so I'm just going to give you what I understand, so the current zoning is mostly mixed use, and it, things fall under general business, light industry, high-impact industry, so there's, that's all available in that, we do know from our budget work that, I think businesses, my, businesses pay a higher tax rate, okay, so the, the material change would be, this would be moving that entire rezoning to residential, so it would remove the businesses off of that zoning.
Is it, is it purely residential, or it's, I think it's mixed use?
It's currently mixed use, but the parcels that they've identified.
It's currently mixed use, but the parcels that they've identified would be rezoned for residential. And not just residential, but high-density residential.
Where is this exactly?
This is the um.
The Healy.
Coria, Fishkill Quarter, like right, um, it's not Camp Beacon, it's um right along fifty-two.
Where the Healy Brothers Car Dealership is.
Yeah.
Because they're moving to Fishkill.
So it's like um, all like we're Dunkin' Donuts.
We have a map of it up somewhere.
Oh, where Romanova is now?
Yes, yeah. Um, so the things that that seem like would be changes would be um design standards, um, increased potential to build high-density residential, removing business component and making it all residential. And then um, I think this sort of, so they need to have a public hearing before they could change this. But the, and you know, I I don't think we can change this letter now, but the two main questions that came up for me, because you can't quite get a sense of it, is currently how many, and and this is also brought on by our discussion about how many strollers are at the Beacon, Spirit of Beacon Day Parade and thinking about our enrollment. But it would be um, like currently, how many units are available to be like zoned to be built there right now? And um, like sort of legally built. And then what that would, what the change would be after rezoning. Um, because then we would have an idea of the maximum capacity and we could, you know, then if a developer did propose a plan in line with that, then we would be able to ask, you know, and they would hopefully, as a part of SICRA, require a school impact statement. Then we would find out potential enrollment for the district. But it is something just as a beacon person, you kind of should be aware of. I'm trying to think of it.
So you said high-density building, residential?
High-density residential.
So like putting like a multi-level.
And they're going past, the other change would be that height level would sort of um.
So it's probably going to be like studios, one-bedroom and maybe two-bedroom?
Um, it depends. I mean, like that, that's the thing is like this, there's nothing really flushed out. So like, yeah, that's possible. There's also, I I know the planner talks about micro apartments a lot, but I don't. It's, there's a couple of things being thrown around about affordability. It's just, it's more about the vague, how quickly it's moving, that is significant material changes to what would be zoned there. It has the impact, has two impacts. One would be financial in terms of like removing commercial. And then also um, high-density residential would just increase the number of people. If there are more, if there's one or two-bedroom apartments that could lead to, you know, more student enrollment. So those are just, and and everything is like super vague right now. And so that's what I think it's just helpful to.
I don't know how big they could get. They even need parking, right? It's not that.
Well, the parking might be removed if there's, that, I mean, that that's the other thing that. Like what's sort of like a little bit fuzzy about it is like, there's a couple of things that get thrown around. Like they, I think they did, I looked at the agenda and they did say something specifically about affordability, but everybody was just saying affordability, but then it was like, well, there's nothing in the language of the zoning about affordability. So like, it seems to move faster because the council likes to, they like that idea of affordability. But unless it's like specifically written down, it might not happen.
Right, it was very complicated for them to um create the affordable, the affordable housing, the small amount of affordable housing there is in the new development on um, on ninety there.
Yeah, so the the change that happened in the agenda that I saw was that they are increasing the required affordable units. I just don't know if that's actually enforceable. Like it's something that you can put that in the zoning, but then somebody could ask for a variance. And it it's, it's all very fuzzy, but it's like a substantial change. And given the fact that, you know, they're a big commercial property that came on um, when Miraba was, you know, put through a pilot. It's just something that we, you know, when I think about our finances, I think we need to keep in mind any changes in commercial um, and any changes in increased residential and increasing the volume of residential, just those have impacts on us. So I would like just keep an eye on it. I think this letter is good to list. Move forward with what we know right now, but just.
Right. I mean, the, for me, what this letter asks is for us to be in conversation with the city about this.
Yeah.
For them to, you know, yeah, to ask what our concerns are, what our priorities are. Hopefully, what, my hope is that it is the beginning of a conversation.
I, my sense about it, and this is just speculative, is it feels like there's some concern that they're trying to avoid. But I think that there's, like, if you're focusing on that, you're not, you might not be thinking about the downstream impacts on the school district or another party about it. So it's, I think they're solving one problem maybe, but they're might be creating some others, so we should.
Are they just trying to figure out like how many units they could put there? Do they have a number at all?
They haven't really talked.
There's no specifics. I've watched every meeting and you can't really get a sense of what the, what the change in the residential. You just know it would be, there's a lot limit right now, lot size limit right now, and that would be gone. And it would be high-density residential, um, which.
Could mean a lot of different numbers, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, you just don't, it's very vague.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the letter to the city?
So moved.
Um, okay. This is with the changes, so the, it's the, it is as the, as you'll see the letter now. You have the link to it.
Did you send it to me?
I'll send it to you again, just to ensure. Um, okay, sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Kristen, who seconded?
Second.
Alina, um, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Um, I'll send you that link. Okay, the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have pulled?
Thirteen point O two B two.
O two V or B?
B as in boy and then two.
Yes, okay.
And twelve point one oh, one one, sorry, twelve point eleven.
Okay, any others?
Yeah, um, thirteen point one seven Q.
Okay. That's it. So can I have a motion to approve twelve point O one through sixteen O five? Sixteen point O five, less thirteen point O two B as in boy two, thirteen point one seven Q and twelve point eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Kristen, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve twelve point eleven?
I did.
So moved.
Flora, uh, Kristen, second by Flora. Uh, comments or questions? Oh, sorry.
I'm, I think I'm catching a mistake in this.
In the agenda?
Sorry, which one are we talking about?
Twelve point eleven.
Yeah, oh, you're on twelve point eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought I heard earlier that it was reduced to a mile.
Yeah.
But it.
We changed, we changed it in the policy meeting, but it.
We did change it.
It says one and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that change just didn't.
That's a good catch.
I remembered that earlier. You see that?
Yeah.
The brain. Remembered that from reading that earlier. I was like, one and a half.
What's that?
It's so funny because.
Okay, it was just that one.
The other changes you have.
One and a half.
Okay.
So that is a mistake.
Do you want us to pull it or do we just?
We can just amend it here.
Okay.
Is that okay? So um, do you want to make an emotion to amend the?
Uh, amend twelve point uh one one, the policy. Uh, eighty-four ten, student transportation and um, either A or B or. Underneath the section where it says distant limitations for residents, B to amend it to one mile instead of the stated one and a half.
Sorry about that.
Um, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, so uh, is any, all in favor or any comments or questions about the amendment? We're voting on the amendment now.
Good catch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed, I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. So now we're voting on the policy as amended. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. And can I have a motion to um approve thirteen point O two B two?
So moved. Second.
Second by Eunice, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero, or passes seven to zero with one abstention. Um, can I motion to approve thirteen point one seven Q?
So moved.
Kristen, second? Second by Flora, comments or questions? Oh.
No, no, that's where we're abstentions, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And you're abstaining?
Yes.
I am in favor, so it passes seven to zero. Okay. Um, can I have a motion to during the meeting?
Eunice. Everyone, everyone.
Sorry, anybody?
Eunice and Alina, it was Eunice.
Eunice and Alina, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm in favor, passes eight to zero. Have a good night.